Hello, I'm Kathy Meyerly and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. I'd like to welcome you all tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like also to thank our generous partners in tonight's forum, The Rochester Post Bulletin, The Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, The Rochester Public Library, and RCTC. The League is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a League do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views that appear tonight in this forum are those of the candidate, not those of the League, of Women Voters, or any partner or sponsor of the forum. And the sponsorship of the forum tonight doesn't mean we're endorsing any particular candidate. As there's never enough time to cover all the issues in a setting such as this, we would encourage you, if your question doesn't come up, to please contact the candidate headquarters directly and talk to the candidates. We would like to thank the candidates for running for office, for offering to serve, and we know the enormous time and dedication and commitment it takes to want us to have this type of public service. We encourage all of our League members as individuals, and we encourage each of you to become involved in the community or the political party of your choice, and definitely go vote on November 6th or vote absentee if you're unable to vote on November 6th. So, we will get started. And tonight's forum is only having the one segment of it, and we have with us tonight the candidates for Ward 4 City Council, Mark Bilderbach and Gary Maline, and Ward 6 candidates, Sandra Means and Greg Oftal. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, and the candidates will then respond to questions from the League, and from the Post Bulletin, and from the Chamber, as well as the questions that you're submitting. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question, and the candidates may ask to have one rebuttal during, to any particular question, but through the course of the evening, each candidate is limited to three rebuttals. So, guard your green cards carefully. And rebuttals are 30 seconds each. The timekeeper for tonight is Ione Schlegel, and she's sitting here at the front. Candidates, when you see the red card, you need to stop. I don't have a button to turn off your mic, but we'll ask you to cooperate. Also asking questions tonight are the Edie Grostow from the Post Bulletin, and Ryan Lace from the Rochester Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers for the order in which they'll go, and tonight we'll be starting. The first question, the first response will be from Gary Maline. So, for the first question, Ryan, Matt asks you to start.
Opening statements?
Oh, I'm sorry, opening statements. Okay, Gary, please go.
Good evening, and thank you very much for taking time out of your busy evening at football. My name is Gary Maline. I'm semi-retired. I have time to visit and listen and be involved in the community in the fourth ward. The education that I bring forward is 47 years of being in business and 40 years of being involved in community service. I also ask that we consider Rochester as a healthy city. And you may ask, what is a healthy city? I would suggest to you that a healthy city is one with its budgets and finances in order, and also it has a citizen input before moving forward, and that the builders and the developers in the community have a seat at the table. A healthy city encourages private sector growth, reduces burdensome regulations, encourages cooperation with city government, and protects our employees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bilderbach, you go second.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me and having me here. Very quickly, I'm a lifelong resident of the Rochester area, born and raised, graduated from Mayo High School, did my college at the RCC as a law enforcement criminal justice associate degree, finished my bachelor's through Winona State, and my master's through Cardinal Street here in Rochester. I'm employed with Mayo Clinic, I've been there 31 years. I do emergency management training and planning. As far as my activities, I've been involved in activities and different programs throughout the city and community for years. I'm here and I'm asking and hoping for your support to continue the progress that we've started in the last four years that I've been on the council. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Ms. Means, you are next.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the sponsors for allowing this opportunity for the candidates to speak. My name is Sandra Means, and I'm running again for reelection to the third, four-year term on the City Council representing Ward 6. It's the ward I have resided in since 1978. I live in the same home since 1978. I have worked in Rochester as a full-time human resources professional in both the private and public sectors for many years, and continued to work part-time for Olmsted County as a human rights advisor until my retirement last year. I would like to continue working full-time representing Ward 6 for the next four years, since my first election since 2003. I'm a graduate of Concordia, and I have accumulated 84 additional credits through the National League of Cities Training Institute, and will be a National League of Cities mentor to new elected officials. Formal or informal learning is a lifelong necessity, and...
Can you wrap up, your time is up?
Oh, okay. I only have to stop signing. I'm through.
Good evening. My name is Greg Oftal, and I'd like to thank the second everyone else up here. Thank you for your time, and thank you for taking time on your busy night to come to attend our candidate forum here. A little bit about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Rochester, born and raised, a graduate from JAYU, attended RCC as the Criminal Justice Associate Degree, and also Mayo's Medical School as far as respiratory care, and I work at Mayo in the financial and insurance side of the house, so I've got a background in insurance, I've got a background in the finance aspects of pretty much budgeting and law enforcement is my, is pretty much my background. And I'd like the opportunity to serve in a different capacity in Rochester if I get the chance. Thank you.
For our first question, I'm going to turn to the chamber, and for the responses to these questions, Mr. Oftal will go first, then Ms. Means, Mr. Bilderbach, and Mr. Maline.
Would you support the heritage preservation ordinance with an opt-in for property owners? Also, do you think there needs to be an ordinance for just a process to handle proposed building demolitions?
Couldn't hear the question.
These microphones, we kind of almost have to swallow, so get close.
Would you support a heritage preservation ordinance with an opt-in for property owners? Also, do you think there needs to be an ordinance for just a process to handle proposed building demolitions?
I would support a heritage preservation opt-in especially for homeowners, and I would support an ordinance for that, mainly because we've seen too many buildings being torn down without really recording their historical value. And I think Rochester, I think we do need to, with our unique history, we do need to retain a, an understanding where we came from and what those buildings represented and the events that happened within that, in those areas.
Okay, Ms. Means?
Yes, I support the heritage preservation ordinance. I think it's critically important that we maintain some of our history here for our future and for our kids' future. I had initiated the request that the Heritage Ordinance Committee, and the Chamber, and the Rochester area builders, and others involved, come together to present us with an ordinance that would be agreeable to both. I think that we don't need to do the ordinance in isolation, we need to do it with the cooperation of many of the people that will be involved and will be affected.
Mr. Bilderbach?
First of all, the Heritage Preservation Committee, and the Chamber, and others are working right now to try to work that out. I am not going to tell you my position, because I'm going to have to listen to this in a public hearing. At that public hearing, I need to have an open mind to listen to what's being stated and make a decision off the comments from there. Right now, we have a multiple, a multiple of different suggestions for this ordinance. And until we get it together and we can figure it out and talk about it and go through it, I can't tell you if I would support it or not, because at this point, we don't know if there's an opt-in, opt-out, if it's optional, non-optional. At this, at this time, we don't have any idea. So until we hear what's going on, it'll come in front of the councilal home meeting on the November 12th, then I can give you a little better answer after that.
Historic preservation is a different concept than what we have talked about. We've talked about heritage is what you said, right, rather than historic preservation? Heritage preservation?
Yeah.
Okay. Heritage preservation means, to me, who we are as a society. If you're talking about historical preservation, then we're limiting it to buildings. Is that not the question? And I would say then, we have to look at what it's going to tie up. Is the building owner, or is a homeowner, going to be brought into the mix of that, and what strings are we going to attach to it? And are we going to tie it, as we've done right now with the building on North Broadway currently, which is a senior citizen center? We cannot do anything with that, because it's listed on the historic register with the National Trust.
Okay, thank you. For our second question, I'll turn to The Rochester Post Bulletin, and Mr. Bilderbach will go first, then Mr. Maline, Mr. Oftal, and Ms. Means.
Some of Rochester's neighborhood groups are working on visions for the futures of their neighborhoods, and these vision plans will be submitted to the City Council for approval in making amendments to Rochester's land use plan. Just how important do you think this type of planning by the neighborhoods is, and do you think it's time for a comprehensive update of the land plan?
Yes, yes, and yes. The land use plan in the city of Rochester was last done in 1979. The downtown master plan did the downtown area but did not touch the core areas. This is the areas where we're having difficulty with the fifth-on-fifth property, Imagine Kutske, Imagine Slatterly, which has a meeting tonight, hopefully to wrap up, finding, getting all of our neighbors together and hearing input from all of our neighborhood. Sometimes the issues are, the neighborhood associations are very, very large, so getting the input and getting all the neighbors involved until the end seems very difficult. The process takes two to three years, and so it has, over time, you have new neighbors, people who may not have heard of it, but now if you look at the Imagine Slatterly, up until tonight, from the first meeting, which was very rough, we'll say, to the last meeting, where the groups actually very much came together, and the groups who opposed it the first time were very supportive of it the second time. Do we need a comprehensive plan for the entire city? You bet, because Rochester's going to grow, and otherwise, we need to make sure the neighborhoods have a right to take care of and protect themselves, and that's where these Imagine plans come in.
Mr. Maline? Ms. Maline?
Having thought about that, and visited with our neighbors in the different neighborhoods in Slatterly in the southwest district, and also the Eastside Pioneers, we have to involve right up front what the agenda is, and I don't think we really know what the agenda right now that we have. I think that we need to really reevaluate what zoning is. We are modifying zoning, making exceptions to zoning, and I think we need to get that plan done. And the zoning that's in place needs to either be abolished, restored, redefined, and then we can start planning. That way, the neighborhoods and the developers and those that want to come in will have an idea of what they can do, and a timeline that they can perform what they need to do. We need to encourage the trends of growth, we need to plan for growth, and we need to encourage growth.
Thank you. Mr. Oftal?
Yes, it's important to actually incorporate the neighbors into any design or build or neighborhood improvement-type projects, because it's the neighbors, it's the neighborhoods themselves that understand what's best for their respective community. And without their involvement, people in the City Council, people in the zoning area, building zoning, would not be able to understand what's going on.
Thank you. Ms. Means?
I think it's critically important that our neighborhoods remain involved, and our council meetings have become much more interesting when we have a group of people sharing their thoughts and their vision for our future. And I agree with my colleague that certainly we need to review our comprehensive plans and our land use plans and zoning, because things have changed. And as the time is allocated appropriately to review those, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. For the third question, it will come from the League, and coincidentally, one of the members of our audience has asked substantially the same question. Ms. Means will go first, then Mr. Oftal, Mr. Maline, and Mr. Bilderbach. What is the most important issue facing Rochester in the next four years?
For me, I think the most important issue is public safety. We have an outstanding, outstanding police and fire department, but when I think about public safety, I think about our deteriorating infrastructure, and how we need to ensure that we move ahead and get those roads built and be prepared for growth. So for me, that is critically important, that we prepare and plan for our future growth and ensuring that our infrastructure is safe.
Thank you. And Mr. Oftal?
Yeah, I would agree with Sandra in the sense that infrastructure is one of the key components, is one of the critically important aspects facing our, based on our community. The other thing I would add, I would think, would be our budgeting too, and make sure that everything is budgeted, you know, prioritize our budgeting, so that any projects that do come forward, the street, street projects, that they are funded appropriately first. That gets one of the more critical aspects too, and that comes along right with the roads, infrastructures, the budgeting.
Thank you. Ms. Maline?
Public safety is one that would be a prime concern, and everybody seems to go back to that one. I would challenge that we have a greater concern, is that do we need two emergency management centers? The statement has been made, we have to have one to back up the other one. And I'm saying, we have enough technology today to take care of one emergency management center. We have a city and a county. We have a building already dedicated to that on Third Avenue, the county has already put it into. We need to take a look at what public safety really means, is it has to do with the policing? We also have a core area downtown right now on Broadway and First Avenue, where we're having a lot of crime. We had a murder down there, we've also had activity going on. Do we really need as many liquor licenses that we've got without having police on the street knowing what's going on?
Thank you. Mr. Bilderbach?
As everybody's set up here, public safety is the number-one issue, because if we don't have a safe city and if people don't feel safe, they won't be coming here, and we'll see the reduced growth of Rochester. Public safety is a broad brush, though, when you say that. It is not only the police department, and our police department has been evolving to stay up with what's happening around the city of Rochester and in the city of Rochester, with the CAT team, the Community Action Team, with the Street Crimes Unit, they're all specializing in areas to take care of different aspects of crime. That said, the police department's doing good, but it's also our fire stations, our fire service areas. Right now, we have the luxury of having fire response within about 90% of the time within four minutes or less. As the city of Rochester grows, that's going to be more difficult. That's why it's going to take real planning on looking where we put our fire stations to make sure that we get the most use of what we have.
Thank you. Our next question is going to come from the Rochester Chamber, and Mr. Maline will go first, followed by Mr. Bilderbach, Ms. Means, and Mr. Oftal. Ryan?
What two specific ideas do you have on improving the efficiency of government that would reduce the tax burden on the business community?
The specific thing that we need to do is to understand the responsibility of each sections of the government we deal with. When do we accept money from the county, city, and state, and the feds? What strings are attached to it? I would encourage the fact that we have to have a budget under control, spending under control, planning for the care of the infrastructure, which we've already talked about. The next thing is, we need to get to some real reductions in our spending, not just cutting the growth, but actually cutting deeper into what the spending are, and help every one of our departments, from all the way from street and alley, all the way up through, to come up with some effective solutions to how to protect the integrity of the city and not sacrifice caring for its infrastructure, as we have with the rec center and the civic center.
Mr. Bilderbach?
We need to look at what we're doing, we need to benefit, and work closer, not only with private enterprises, such as what we've done with the UMR, the 318 Building, but also with the county, the state. The county would be our best ally if we worked with them, trying to find different areas that we can combine services, look at how that affects the entire city. You look at how, right now, Broadway is taken care of by the state, they're talking about returning that to the city with some money, but we have opportunities with the county to look at how can we work better efficiently. Right now, we have two transit facilities, but we're putting vehicles from each of the transit facilities at the opposite end of the town in each other's buildings to help in the efficiency.
Ms. Means?
Well, I think we need to, I think we've been very conservative with our budget, to the point that we haven't hired any new people, we have reduced some of the things that I feel are very important for our staff. What I think we need to do is stop, or determine how we can lessen our dependence on local government aid and HUD, Housing and Urban Development. We need to identify how we can create opportunities that will increase our tax base, and continue to provide the exemplary service we do on a very restrictive budget.
Thank you. Mr. Oftal?
I guess we, yeah, I think we do need, we do need to look at the budget, and if we can reduce and combine services, for example, from the city and county government, if we're doing duplicate service, is there a way that we can increase the efficiency by combining them? And if we combine, now, facilities, if we can combine facilities, such as street alley maintenance and the county departments, if we can combine those together, that would help and reduce our budget as well. So anything that we can do to increase cooperation between even the local state and government, or local county government, and the state would be beneficial to all the citizens of Rochester.
Thank you. The next question will come from the Post Bulletin. Mr. Oftal will start, followed by Ms. Means, Mr. Bilderbach, and Mr. Maline.
There's a lot of talk these days about the aging baby boom generation, and that Rochester is a growing and maturing community. What role, if any, should city government and the city council play in ensuring that Rochester is adequately prepared to handle this change in our demographics?
I think that's a question that's actually faced by all the cities here, within the state and nation, that we do have, it's true, we do have an aging baby boom population, and what we can do as the city government is to make sure that there are resources, mainly, hopefully, mainly private resources, that the city can help coordinate with them to get up to the aging population as far as what utilities are available and what resources are available to that specific, that specific population itself.
Thank you. Ms. Means?
Well, I think some of the things, we certainly recognize that our population is getting older. We have, in the past, and will continue in the future, to provide affordable housing for people that are aging and those that are of lower income. I also believe it's important that we promote and participate in healthy lifestyle initiatives, like the one, for example, rebuilding the senior citizen center, and have it in conjunction with our park and rec department. I think this is a multi-generational approach, and will be benefit to all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Bilderbach?
Well, number one, we're working to help build more housing for seniors in this city. I'm working on a project with a group that I hadn't heard from for almost a year, and now I've come back online, and secured and working for funding to build a new senior apartment house outside by the old Eastwood Golf Course. So having the housing, the appropriate housing for people to be able to get around if we, as we age, we get some disabilities, make sure that we can stay independent living is important. The fact that we're looking at working with the senior center and having the senior center go and be a part of the rec center, again, the exercise, the activity has been proven, you hear it over and over again, and that's how we can help partner with other programs to help make sure that the seniors have a good living place in the city of Rochester.
This morning, the Senior Citizen Center had a breakfast and invited a lot of us down there. Their projection is that 94% of the population will be above retirement age within the next 10 years. 80% of us currently drive to the rec center for, using the facilities. I would suggest that we look at infrastructure in the city to increase the amount of mobility via a transit system, rather than spending monies to incorporate something that right now needs a lot of maintenance and update. We have not done a good job in maintaining our infrastructure. Are we responsible for that, or the management? I would suggest it's the city council that hasn't provided money for that. The next thing we need to really consider, really consider, is to build that based on the needs, not what we want.
Thank you. The next question is going to come from the audience. Mr. Bilderbach, you will start, followed by Mr. Maline, Mr. Oftal, and Ms. Means. How would you describe your obligations to the citizens of Rochester who don't know you, or the actions of the city council, and in what specific ways will citizens benefit from your service?
Well, I hope they have already, because I'm out and about. I go out, I work, I'm part of all the neighborhood associations, I stay active and going out to the different events that are going on around the city. On the city card, you have my cellphone, not very many people put that there, so that I can have direct contact with them as soon as possible. When you look at what our impacts are, it is being out, being there, being visible, being a part of it. One other council member, myself, walk the streets from about 11 o'clock at night till 3:30 in the morning, so we can see what's happening, see what's going on in the streets so we understand, so when these issues come forward, we have an idea of what's happening.
We need to be involved in all of the wards in the city and know who the city council person is in charge of that. So when somebody comes into the city, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the mayor, to somebody that wants to develop something in the city, we need to, each one of us, know. I have that time right now, being semi-retired, that I can personally go visit with that, I can spend time with the neighborhood chairmans of the neighborhood associations, get their input, and stay in contact with them. It takes time to do this. The one thing we forget, time is something we can never recreate. We need to remember and respect that, not only with the people that are currently our elected officials, but those that are coming forward to fill in the blanks that we have right now. I would suggest it takes time, and having a full-time job, you cannot respond to the time needed.
Mr. Oftal?
Yes, I've been active in the community pretty much, after high school, I've been active in different organizations, all the way from amateur radio to Red Cross and different examples like that, so I've been active, I've been active that way, and how I would perceive them myself, I want someone to be able to feel free that they can contact me anytime that they need to, I'll be available whenever possible, even though I do have a full-time job, but it's not going to exclude me from serving the citizens of Rochester. not going to exclude me from serving the citizens of Rochester.
Thank you, Ms. Means.
I think our obligation to our people on our board is to be available and to listen and to be inclusive and be responsive. I think I have done those things very well for the last five years, and I will continue to have the citizens at Ward Six is my priority.
Thank you. Our next question will return to the Rochester Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Means, you'll go first, followed by Mr. Ockdahl, Mr. Maline, and Mr. Bilderback.
The private sector has changed its compensation model to become more affordable. Would you support adjusting public sector compensation to more align with private sectors to become more affordable to taxpayers?
Would you repeat your question just so I make sure I understand that?
Sure. The private sector has changed its compensation models to become more affordable. Would you support adjusting public sector compensation to more align with the private sectors to become more affordable to taxpayers?
Well, I'm not aware of the compensation model of the private, of the private sector. I don't know what that model is. I know in our city, I don't think we compensate our people enough. Our employees have had minimal increases or have had no increases because we wanted to keep the budget, one that would be realistic and one that would be acceptable to the citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Ockdahl.
And with me being in the private sector, I'm in, I'd be in favor of going, of being more of the private, private sector type compensation.
Mr. Maline.
Compensation, in my understanding, and the figures bear it out, that we spent twenty percent more in government for the same job because we have so many unions. There's nineteen unions that we deal with right now. I would suggest that we go back and really reevaluate what the criteria are for the employees. Right now, I have many of the compadres in the business world that are losing their employees to the city and county because the compensation packages are there. In private business, you operate with a budget. If you don't have work, you find something for the people to do that is needed within the shop, and if the shop hasn't got any work to do, you take a short week, thirty hours. We can't afford to continue employing people. We need to take a look at, do we need to have streets and alleys and dividers that require more work? Sprinkler systems to maintain when we have freezing that goes on? We've got planting in the center of Second Street and Highway fourteen. Do we need that?
And Ms. Bilderback.
I think it's important, it's one thing that we try to do, and I invite everybody to come down when we do the budget hearings in December and we talk about the budget. We have tried to reduce and we are continuing to. Does that mean reworking with some of our unions? Yes, and that means we have. And by the way, it's nineteen bargaining units. Not all of those are unions, but they're bargaining units. The fact is, is we continue to work, push our, to work down, and the way we do some of that is doing more private business, public-private businesses, that'll help reduce some of the budgets, help reduce the number of staff needed, and so in that way, we can continue to work down. We are doing that. The city has had a very low increase in employees, in fact, pretty much none, and their wage increases have been froze as well as taking time off in the last few years to help make the budget. So it's something we have to continue to work at. We need to stay open and watch and see how others are doing it and use best practice values.
The last question for tonight is coming from the audience, and we'll start with Mr. Maline, Mr. Bilderback, Ms. Means, and Mr. Ockdahl in that order. Is there any activity or program the city is currently funding that you would describe as a mistake or not a good investment?
Well, one comes to mind right now, and it's because we are giving permits, we do have a wet house that costs us a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit. There's forty-two units out there. I've asked the city, I've asked the county, and they all say that's not part of their budget that's run by Minnesota Housing. We're now taking a look at, that the county, again, with the support of the city, wants to take a look at building three hundred and some apartments for the homeless. Do we really need to continue when we have other ways to fund it? Shouldn't we look back to the fact that the churches and the families care for each other rather than spending this kind of money?
Okay, Mr. Bilderback.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Is there any activity or program the city is currently funding that you would describe as a mistake or not a good investment?
Thank you. The wet house is not a city project. You can talk to all the groups, and I'll tell you about if it works or not. You have to make up your own mind. Projects that we're funding in the city, there's expectations of services in this city, and people have those expectations. Should we fund all those? No, we need to look at what the costs are and see how many of them are helping themselves or working their way so they can be self-sustaining. But there's an expectation, again, of what people like. You may not be a big fan of the Arts Center or Civic Theater, but if you are, those are programs you feel are valuable and you'd like to see in this city, and it's one of those things that give you what you feel an expectation of a good life, a good community is. Do we need to look at them? Do we need to work on them? Do we need to try to get more self-sustaining by those groups? Absolutely. But it doesn't mean you cut those projects out, those programs. I like sports, you may not. Does that mean we get rid of supporting the athletic fields in this town? I would think not. And the same is if you like the arts, and I'm not a big art person, but it's something that we're not going to get rid of just because I don't use it.
Ms. Means.
I think we have done a very good job in our investments in our community, and obviously we need to continue to evaluate how we do business and look for continuous improvements as we go forward, and I believe we are doing that. So I don't think there's any program that I can think of right now that we shouldn't fund because it's not a good investment. We invest in the people of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Ockdahl.
Yeah, one comes to mind, it's the Civic Center. It's not that I don't like the Civic Center, I love the Civic Center, but how it's managed currently, with it having a huge operating loss, a continuous operating loss per year, that needs to be relooked at as far as can we better manage it? Do we need to go to more of a private sector model? Do we need, how can we best get the best bang for our pockets, taxpayers, for the use of that facility?
Thank you. We'll now have one-minute closing remarks from each of our candidates. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Means would like to rebuttal from that last question.
May I just respond about the Mayo Civic Center? Our Civic Center is a jewel in our community. The Civic Center, however, has many needs to make it competitive with other civic centers, and we want our Civic Center to attract conventions and bring additional business to here, which will lessen some of our tax burden as well. And we have the capability, and we need the bonding passed so that we can have a facility that we're all proud of, that has the technology that's needed and requested by our users.
Thank you. Ms. Maline, you would like to rebuttal?
The Civic Center, I would suggest we consider calling it a convention center. We find somebody in the community that's willing to take it over a one-dollar-a-year lease. We then, as a city, go ahead and remodel it or what we have to do to make it so that it's safe, the roofs don't leak, and then let them run it under a constrained budget. Business knows how to run business better than cities and counties and states do.
And Mr. Bilderback, also would like to rebuttal?
Just to let you know, we are currently evaluating, have some outside advisors who are looking at the Civic Center from the top down to see how that facility can run more effectively. Civic centers, convention centers, whatever you wish to call it, have difficulty making money in any city, but the money-making for that city is the fact that they bring people into that city. They put heads in beds, as they say in the world of hotel industry. People stay here. They pay the taxes, they eat the food, they go to the different facilities and use it. That's where the dollars comes in, on tax dollars returned to the city.
Thank you. And each candidate was only allowed one rebuttal on each question. So now I'd like to turn to our candidates in the order of Mr. Ockdahl, Ms. Means, Mr. Bilderback, and Mr. Maline for your closing one-minute remarks.
And again, thank you for taking the time of the evening to attend the debate this evening, and a little bit more about me is, I've got a, in addition to having that financial background, I've got an analytical mindset. So when I look at, I look at the issue, I look at it from an analytical perspective, kind of what's the best use, what's, how can we best use, or how does that question best answered? I tend to look at things analytically. And again, I'm a lifelong resident of Rochester, and I would consider your vote on November sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Means.
Well, the privilege to serve the members in Ward Six is a real honor, and my commitment to this community is evident, not only in what I say, but in how I vote and how I interact with the public. I'm very proud of many things that have been accomplished, including a resolution in support of diversity and inclusiveness, which you can now find on the front page of the city website. I know I have trust that we will continue to work as a world-class community and a cutting-edge destination city, and I want to be there as we're working on those plans. I believe I'm the best candidate for Ward Six, and I hope that the citizens in Ward Six will vote for me to serve another four years.
Thank you. Mr. Bilder.
First of all, thank you to the Chamber, Post Bulletin, and League of Women Voters for hosting this, and thank you for coming out. I was elected four years ago. I've enjoyed my opportunity to be here in the city council. I work tirelessly and give time to do that, my family, myself. That was a conscious decision when I ran and won, and we live up to that. I stay out a lot of evenings and meetings, visiting with people, working with people. We're not done. We have a lot to do. We talked just very little today about land planning. The city's going to grow, and with that, we need to be smart about how we're doing this. We need to have an overall comprehensive plan. I want to be a part of that. I feel I've worked hard, and I'm hoping that you feel the same way. I'm hoping you reelect me for four more years for the fourth Ward City Council. Thank you.
Ms. Maline.
Ward Four is an election about who's better qualified. Who has plans to encourage growth? Who has managed staff and employees for forty-seven years? Who has set and operated within a budget? Who has given forty years of community service? Who has the time and knows our community? You do have a choice based on the above five questions. Now it's up to you to vote for the most qualified fourth Ward candidate representative to keep our city together healthy, and together, we can do this. I ask for your vote on November sixth. Gary Maline.
I'd like to thank all of our candidates for your service and for your willingness to go through this process for a strong democracy because of people like you. I would also like to remind the audience, those viewing, that the views expressed tonight are those of the individual candidates and not those of League of Women Voters in the Chamber or the Post Bulletin. I'd also like to thank all of you for coming tonight, and please join me in giving our candidates a round of applause.[1793.42][1793.42]